Do I need to give Jim a call tomorrow? Or do you have to go back to work?
How are you?
Oh.
Nice to meet you, John.
Josh, Josh Pettit.
No, I think it's gonna be fine. We're just trying to alleviate some of the pain that's caused so.
What is Mr. Kemp's problem? Because if I get one more email on this freaking mailbox, I'll call a friend from Dan's office, and I'm gonna come down on Mr. Kemp like he doesn't know. I got the largest company in the world in our town, and they're giving them a hard time about where to put this mailbox. Are you serious? First of all, you know how I feel. I have three zip codes I work with.
Usually, they call them in one at a time tree.
You guys have Crown Point zip book because supposedly, you're closer to Crown Point in the yard eighty place, which is a bunch of BS. I got a Hobart zip code. I've got people in the subdivision that have Crown Point zip code. Hobart calling change, they're in Maryville proper, and their kids go to Maryville schools. Go figure that. Go figure that was because of the jurisdiction.
So I think, I think they work there. I think they work there.
Where do they want to put this?
Other states and, um...
The mailbox. On Mississippi, Arizona, Carol Anna Drive.
The second night of my shift, first thing I go is asking over at Fort Wayne with a hundred and seventy.
The problem is, is why I'm having this, is why...
Somebody poured into a four inch.
This is the Maryville Plan Commission meeting. It is approximately five thirty-eight, maybe? And...
Madam President, I beg your pardon. I ordinarily would not interrupt, but I've been advised that there's a gray car in our parking lot that has its trunk up.
Ooh!
And the trunk ahead being up may not be intentional.
Well, it's not me.
Uh-uh, might be mine.
Uh-uh, you better go check it. Go on, we'll wait for you.
Hit the trunk instead of the lot.
Well, we still have a form.
Well...
Yes, we do.
We'll be kind to you.
Yes, ma'am.
Each part of the meeting, right?
Going in a full and four.
Sir?
Yep.
Is even at the door locked off?
Yes, it is.
Police Bob, can you disengage that? Can you get in?
I didn't get the notice about that.
He said, "If that's Bob, we can't get in." We could call out the name.
Okay.
What?
Because I didn't know. I was trying to, I was trying to unlock the front doors with key.
Oh, yeah, with the street.
Yeah.
You should have a reader.
Uh, this is, we're joining, this is the property.
I think the back door and over there is...
So the problem was, I tried to get the front doors to go though.
It's an informal meeting. Thank you, Commissioner, BZ or anything else.
So I had to come around.
It's an informal meeting.
I'm sorry.
Community meeting.
I don't have keys for the front door.
Yeah.
I apologize for the delay. Sorry.
How'd that trunk go up?
As I pushed, the trunk opens the, the lock the car.
Ah.
Okay.
Allegedly. Allegedly.
Are you all right today, Jeff?
Yes, I am, thank you.
We could continue then. Five thirty, five forty-two, we are calling the Maryville Plan Commission meeting to order, and will everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Mr. Secretary, Chris Mellon, would you take the roll call?
Luke Rich is absent. Mr. Swike?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
I myself am here. Vice President Dering?
Here.
And President Uzalak?
Here.
That's five. We have a quorum, and I'm, I apologize, I skipped Ms. Chandler Felton.
Okay.
Even though Mr. Griffin had said she'd be late.
Well, if she comes in, we will recognize her as being present.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Okay, continuing on after roll call, what do we have here, election? What's this election?
Oh, no. Just skip that. Thank you, Ms., sorry, Ms...
Is that an error?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Unless you want us to elect you again?
No.
Okay.
I think we're okay. Okay, can I have an approval for the minutes, a motion to approve the minutes of March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion by Mr. Bryan and a second from Jeff Swike. Everybody in order with that?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, oh, everybody. Sorry about that. Okay. Aye, aye, aye.
It's gonna be one of those nights, huh, Madam President?
I, I'm just thinking, yeah, I don't know why. I goofed up on something here. Okay. It's all, the motion's been approved by the board. Thank you all. Any communications from the board? None? Okay, we will continue on with comments from the chairman? Well, I think everything will be okay. We'll continue on with the meeting then. All right. Any old business, board members? None? Any news, new business? None? Okay, going on to item one. P three, PS one dash oh five two five, TPL Silos LLC petitioner and owner located at southwest corner of East Seventy-third Avenue. His request preliminary six lot subdivision approval on sixty-three point two five acres in a CIS commercial industrial zoning district. Purpose: To allow a two-building speculative logistics, log, logistics center. Okay, is he present?
Yes.
Well, give us your program. Present yourself with your name and address.
Matt Cruz, Crow Holdings. I've been here a lot over the last five years.
You have your own office, Matt.
Yes.
Anyway, Fred's here from Cage, oh, go ahead. Just for the record, Fred Thady, Cage Engineering, twenty-two hundred Cabot Drive, Suite three twenty-five, Lisle, Illinois.
John LaBelle of Arco Murray at five forty-nine West Randolph Street, Chicago, Illinois.
What is your title?
I'm a project manager.
And the other gentleman, what was your title?
Yep.
Sorry, I, I'm a principal at Cage Engineering. We are the civil engineer of record.
Oh, good, okay. So do you want to tell us what's going on now?
Uh, we can, sure. So I was not here at the workshop. Fred and John and Mark, also from Arco Murray, were here. Similar to all the other buildings we've built in town, this one, we're proceeding with two of the three, so there still is site work that will be done for the third largest building on the site, the southernmost building. I heard at the workshop specifically Seventy-third and that access point is something that we should discuss as it relates to life, fire life safety. So from my standpoint as the developer and putting myself in a police fire situation, aside from the fact there is a curb cut there now, we don't want to create an unsafe situation in town. So left turn in is something that no, no truck or car should do. But what I'm picturing, because that spine road is gonna ultimately serve three buildings for cars and trucks, shift change, getting people out of that site and moving south or even, you know, going north, for instance, probably more importantly on Mississippi, is gonna create a very unsafe situation if you're trying to make a left turn out. So what we'd like to focus on is a, at least a right turn out of the site onto Seventy-third, so you've got that signalized intersection to then go north with that movement, because I think it's gonna be a really bad situation trying to go north in Mississippi for a car from the spine road. So I'd like to try to get that resolved, you know, if we could tonight. Recognizing a full access point on Seventy-third is not something that we need or are asking for.
Did you do a traffic study with our engineer?
We haven't, right? No, we have not.
No. What do you think, Steve? Should you do some type of traffic study?
Well, they're just here for the prelim, preliminary plat. They're just here for the preliminary plat.
Okay.
A traffic study will be done once we dive into the, the, in the engineering aspect and the details of it. We'll be able to hammer out with Fred and his team what, you know, what's gonna be needed after the traffic study's done.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Okay, board members, Mr. Swike, what do you think right now?
We were talking about earlier how to, that the existing wetland be preserved, and we don't want the water to pollute the wetland, because I believe that the water you use is gonna be heated water for the system. Is that what you're...
Heated water for what system are...
For your building that you're gonna build.
Well, the, the wetlands are being mitigated, so we're working with IDAM and the Army Corps in order to do that, to effectively create a higher standard of wetland offsite.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Bryan, what do you have?
Well, and I've been looking at the plans over the last couple of weeks and, and really thinking about the, the, obviously, the traffic problem. Going out onto Seventy-third on off-hours isn't, you know, as far as right turnout isn't gonna be a big problem. During peak hours, it's gonna be tough, uh, because it's a very, very short throw, and you're turning out basically into a right turn-only lane to go south on Mississippi. If they wanna go north, they gotta cut, cut across to the northbound turning signalized arrow. Conversely, going out onto Mississippi Street is gonna be tough, uh, because it's, it's not super busy twenty-four hours a day, but it's busy enough, even during off-hours, that semis that get stacked up coming out of the property trying to go north to Sixty-first Avenue or south to thirty to hop on sixty-five, I don't know what the solution is for that. I don't know if it would require a signal down the road. It's just, I, I see turning left even onto Mississippi is gonna be tough. So it's something that we'll need to discuss down the road when we get to that part of it, uh, when we do the traffic study. But I, I would be very in favor if it's feasible of putting a signal there, whether it lines up with one of the streets on the Mississippi, or on the Hobart side. You know, that, that's for the engineers to figure out, but just be aware that we're really gonna have to take a tough look at, you know, ingress, egress to the property. And that's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Oh, okay, thank you, Bryan. Chris Mellon, questions?
No, I have nothing at this time.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay, Sean, this is in your work.
This is... Hi, Matt, how you doing?
Good, Sean.
Long time, no see, no talk.
I know.
Uh, I got a bevy of stuff, Madam President. First and foremost, uh, I'm gonna put my other hat on, Mr. Svenoff, if that's okay. Matt, you and I have talked about Lamar just bought two sign easements from the Kalar family. We use that drive that's on Seventy-third Avenue now to get to the billboard. That billboard is gonna stay up much longer than I'm gonna be around town or working for Lamar. So the access into that board has got, that, that access easement's gotta be preserved. Okay? One thing to consider, folks, is, um, Matt, this quadrant of Halsted, Modrak, and you also have Lawrence Benjamin, and Angie Chilcott and I have been going back and forth with Mr. Benjamin as to what could come through there. A different offshoot of Crow Holdings, Trammell Crow, came in back in twenty twenty-three and wanted to put two large buildings on the northwest quadrant. And we said traffic was gonna be a problem because, and Steve and I have talked about this, from Virginia to Mississippi, at some point, the town's gonna have to address, whether I'm around, Marjorie, you're around, it, it's gonna have to be done, which we've talked, I've talked to Matt about, we added this into an EDA. This is in its own TIF, like a TIF district, that's got an extended time where we could look at widening that road out to four lanes, including the bridge. The comment, Bryan, and, and I've had this discussion before, uh, turning onto Mississippi, uh, do we need XL, DCL lanes? They're not going to do that because Steve and Bob and I have talked about Mississippi south of thirty and all that development, that large Opus Building south of my subdivision. So turning movements into, uh, what Al Bartley built on the west side of Mississippi, Myel Cosmetics on the west side of Mississippi, that turning movement, if you've got a four-lane stretcher road, guys, we don't need an XL, DCL lane, correct?
No, that is, that's actually incorrect. I think on their plans, I didn't bring the plans with me, but they actually show, they actually show XL, DCL lanes at their, at their, on their Mississippi street entrance.
Yeah, Sean, just the XL, the southbound acceleration lane.
You can see it on the overall, Sean, C two, C two point zero. Yeah. So it's, it's an acceleration lane primarily geared towards trucks headed southbound. Okay. Now, this entrance, though, off of Mississippi is gonna line up, and, and I see one of our, our constituents, actually, he's on the Hobart side, Mr. Gaze is out there, uh, there's a street where Jerry's house is on the south side, and Hobart built a new house, Jerry, north of you. This entrance is gonna line up with that road, I believe. Is that correct, Fred?
It, it does not, Sean, it is offset.
It does not?
No.
So we're gonna have an offset intersection there.
Why?
Well, yeah, I guess that's, that's, I tell you what, guys, because, you know, you got, Matt, you know how in favor I am of everything you've done in town and, and what we've gone through together with tax abatements on this property and getting this thing put together. But by the same token, we've just recently launched a Maryville-Hobart Task Force for the Mississippi Street corridor, and you guys probably have read in the paper that Al Krieger has got the property at Patriot Park where the mayor of Hobart submitted for the convention center. Whether or not that gets approved, I don't know, but that road over by Jerry and Stacy's house, that winds back into Patriot Park on the Hobart side. And when that gets developed and they wanna have a lot of things on the Hobart side, we're gonna have to figure out how to line up this intersection, guys. I think Bryan might be right. There's gonna be a need for another traffic light down at what would be Seventy-Fifth or, I don't know what the name of that is, but yeah, I didn't realize, I thought these lined up from the workshop last time.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused because the site plan hasn't changed in, you know, the six months we've been here, throughout the entire rezoning and any of it, and so this is the first time that anyone's kinda focused on this, and we're effectively done with design. So I'm a little frustrated by that, but to be fair, we will work with the town. That road across the street got built in two thousand and six, so nineteen years later, we're still sitting here talking about when it might be developed. If the convention center goes there, how do we know that that road doesn't get trashed and redone?
I don't think is...
All right, well, let, let's back up a second, Fred. On, on C two point two point oh, I see a right-in, right-out only for Building A, which is two hundred twenty-eight thousand square feet. And then immediately to the south of that, I see what appears to be a full-access road cut on the, on Mississippi. That road cut does not line up with the, the, the street that's on the Hobart side?
No, if you look at that same sheet, you will see that on the east side of Mississippi, plan south, you've got what looks like a curb return there. That is that, those are the curb going into that street. Yeah, I, you know, I, I don't have the distance in front of me, but I, you would be probably less than the typical quarter-mile spacing that people like to see between stoplights. So the location, and I just, I scaled it off, um, I, I can fire up my laptop if we want an exact dimension here, but from our entrance to the Mississippi intersection is roughly that quarter mile. So in an ideal world, you want quarter-mile spacing from signalized intersections. So if this is gonna become a signalized intersection at some point in time, you probably want that existing street to find its way a little bit further south.
For note, both of those streets leading back to Prospect Park are called Silverstone Parkway, connected by Prospect Place. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, and I know we've got the joint task force with Hobart, but we are pretty much in control of Mississippi Street. We can, we are responsible for maintaining the street lights, even though they're on the Hobart side. We are responsible for paving, even though half of Mississippi Street is on Hobart property. Uh, I think that when and if a convention center was, uh, approved, I think it would work out to where the signalized intersection, if Crow was to put one in or jointly put one in, uh, would line up with anything done on the Hobart side, since it is our road.
Silverstone also currently has a jog to the north. I'm not sure why that was done when it was originally designed, but if Silverstone were to continue straight west and intersect with Mississippi, it might actually line up closer to where we are proposing, which would be the, the proper distance for a signalized intersection.
Yeah, but unfortunately, um, Silverstone Parkway right now, Fred, has got a new house on it.
Yeah.
Right across the street from Jerry and Stacy's house. So that's relining that road, you know, one of a couple different ways is gonna impact the Hobart side, whether it be, you know, you got two property owners there that are gonna be impacted there.
Here's another thing, too, Adam, not to interrupt you, Sean, here's another thing, too. You know, you look at where the curb cut is on the E, east side, you look at your, your, where you guys are coming out on the west, and when Jerry was here last time, um, he, uh, talked about how they didn't want the lights from the trucks shining in their bedroom window. It's about where, where you're at.
In...
I mean, I don't have a scale drawing or nothing, but that we can't have.
Yeah.
And that, that was mentioned very early on.
This is why we're in preliminary.
Okay? And I'm not sure, you know, you're talking about all the design is done, um, you know, it's a great set of plans, but Brent Jordan has still gotta, you know, send us the details of what you're gonna do on Mississippi. He showed it in the overall, and he called me, and he said, "I show in the overall, but I'm gonna send you the detailed plans." We don't have them yet, to comment on them. Which is fine, I mean, we're very early on here, but I'm just pointing out a couple things.
Well, and these are all things to consider down the road.
Oh, sure, exactly.
I don't think anybody's getting upset about...
Right.
Yes.
Learning about this now.
Right.
Because we're in preliminary.
Right.
We're very early on.
Very early on.
So...
Would you care to comment anymore, please, Attorney?
No, no, no.
On where we're at with this?
We're in preliminary.
Okay.
We're still learning about the project.
Yes.
We're still sharing information with the developer, with the development team over here in the town.
Right.
And we're, again, just in a discovery phase in terms of all these aspects.
Mm-hmm.
So at this time...
Oh, and another thing, the staff report, please, Sheila.
Uh, please.
I forgot. We'll maybe bringing this up to par a little bit, the staff report.
Petitioners requesting a preliminary six lot subdivision approval to allow a two-building speculative logistics center on sixty-three point two five acres in the CIS commercial industrial zoning district. The proposed project seeks to generate further economic development in the town of Maryville. Surface water will be collected by storm sewer and directed to three interconnected detention bases that discharge to a covert on Seventy-third Avenue Row, and other flow goes to the existing wetland to be preserved. All roofs and paved areas are collected into the storm sewer. There are no downspouts or pumps.
Thank you, Sheila.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, where are we right now, then, Attorney?
We're still in the questioning and answer phase, I think, you guys.
Are there any more questions from the board or from the engineers? Yes, Steve?
Um, I don't think I have anything else to comment as far as the plans. The, the plat was submitted for review. It was reviewed, commented. The, the plat was submitted for review, it was reviewed, comments were sent back, and comments were sent back this afternoon, so the corrections are, were being made if they're not already done, so the plat itself is moving forward.
Okay, so, Robert, do you have the same, you think the same?
Yeah, Steve took my thunder, so, yeah.
Sorry, Bob.
They, they had a nice quick turnaround, so we appreciate that with the plat, so we'll keep that moving forward, we're under review right now, and we did do a, an initial review of the, the civil plans as, as they were submitted, along with a, a technical review of the stormwater system, and comments were sent, and Arkham Worry is actually working on those right now, so.
Please, please note the comments of everybody tonight here, in terms of the concerns of the lineups.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And just because, you know, if you have to move the entrance to line everything up, I mean, quarter-mile, yes, it's ideal. Can it still be installed, less than a quarter mile? It could, it's not ideal, but it could be done, and it, and it should be done.
So regardless of how we've gotten to this point, it doesn't make any sense to continue with a plating discussion if we're not sure what the lots actually look like based on the comments that were made here tonight. So again, not sure how we got here, but we're here. So first thing we need to solve with you, Steve, is where does this entrance need to live? Because there's only one curb cut on the Hobart side.
Well, we're just here for the plat tonight, right?
Well, we can't do a plat because that's based on the buildings that we're designing.
Well, until you land a lot, yeah.
I mean, and this is, this.
It's, we're, we're going to have to meet and then talk about it with, with the, the team. I mean, you know, after looking at it, like we said, with, with Jerry's property, you're coming right out, you know, with, with the headlights into his bedroom, which.
In.
Day, day one, that's what we said we didn't want, so, but it happened.
What, our plan was going to be there in just laying out the buildings was proposing screening, extra topsoil, birmingham landscaping, and going that direction to solve for that. But yeah, we can't continue a plating process if we don't know what the lots in the buildings look like.
Well, I mean, it could be something simple, not simple, but, you know, that entrance, moving it further south to eventually go around the, the southern building and coming out further down.
But then, that doesn't, that, the other Silverstone Parkway connection point is south of Nick's property?
Yeah, it's, it's, it, it, it just might be a three-way intersection. Okay, I think what Sean's saying is, is where, you know, where, yeah, you're, you're, you're never going to get it to line up properly, the distances and things that, you know, typically you would need. If you move the, if you move the entrance further to the south, I'm just thinking out loud, further to the south to eventually go around that southern building, you could come out to a signal, a three, a three-way intersection, wouldn't, there would be no off, there'd be no offset, so it'd just be a three-way signalized intersection. That's all, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. How do we get that figured out? You know, I can be here tomorrow, meeting with you.
Well, we can talk with Brent and, and, and his team on it, and, and, you know, look at it and see what we can do to move it around to, you know.
How quickly can you?
Either line it up or move it further away.
How quickly can you meet with the developers on this? I guess, is what Matt's saying.
Yeah, because, I mean, yeah.
To get this all ironed out so we can move on.
Right. Well, we could, we could do, we could do a Zoom call tomorrow.
Okay.
Or we could do a face-to-face.
You know, whichever is easier.
Joe, we could still do the approval tonight with the encumbrance of.
Contingent upon, contingent upon staff review.
Correct.
So we can still keep the project moving forward, contingent upon your meeting with staff, and staffs reviewing approval.
But will, will the lot lines be able to change to reflect?
Yeah, you're talking about moving the lot lines, you can't do that.
Right.
I'm so, I'm sorry, guys, this is, this is going to fall on me, too, as the councilman. And again, Matt, you and I go way back, and you've spent a lot, capital letters, a lot of money, and this, I, I should have caught this, I should have gone to Steve and Bob and caught this design, this is my fault.
No, it's okay.
And I'm sorry, because there isn't a good place to put this entrance into your subdivision, and I've got a way, as the councilman, $100 million project over the alignment and what's going to happen on Mississippi Street that's already four-laned, and we've already spent a lot of money that our, our neighbors are benefiting from, a lot of money on, on Mississippi Street. And I know we want to be safe, but I don't know where this entrance is going to go, Steve.
Well, no.
To be honest with you, you can't line it up with Silverstone.
Well, Sean, can we defer here, have a meeting with them tomorrow on what they do on the alignment of the, of the entrance so they can get the lot lines planned out?
I'll tell you guys how, Matt, are you in town tomorrow?
Um, I can be.
Because I'm, I'm old, I'm an old-school pen and paper kind of guy. Quite honestly, I'd rather meet at Jerry's house with all of us out in the field and walk this damn thing, and get it done, and get it done fast, and get it done right.
That's fine, yeah.
Can you guys meet out at Jerry's house tomorrow at lunchtime?
Better than Zoom.
But I hate Zoom calls, everybody knows I hate Zoom calls. Can we meet on the, in the field tomorrow?
Yeah.
Can you got, Fred, can you meet in the field tomorrow?
I'm meeting at two. I will find a way.
All right, let's do that.
This is too important.
It's too important, it is, it's too, there's too much money on the table, I'm, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna, I don't want to screw this up for someone that takes my place in office, and everybody's bitching and moaning that, oh, you guys approved this thing and look what you left, a mess for the town. We cannot do that, guys, that's not our job. So.
Well, since this is Sean's word, I have to agree with him and with the attorney, too. I think the best thing to do is for all of you to meet tomorrow and try to get this straightened out, and then we could take it from there, possibly at the next meeting, if that's all right with you three, or?
Yeah, no, I recognize that we need to press pause.
Pardon?
I, I recognize that we need to press pause and meet tomorrow.
But, Mr. Svetinoff, we have an advertised public hearing of preliminary subdivision approval that's been advertised, so they don't have to send notices out, I think we need to take comment, put it into the record.
Take, take comment, open hearing, close hearing, and then go from there.
All right.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so we're still taking the comments, correct?
We're still taking comments.
Okay, any public comments tonight? Any public comment? Please. Identify yourself.
Nick Petrofsky, 7676 Mississippi Street. My biggest concern with this development is just making sure that the stormwater, the sewer systems, everything else is directed the right way without flooding or doing any more water damage into my property, because I've been having issues over there ever since the bike trail got put in. So, it's all I'm, that's all I'm here to say, I have nothing against them, I want them to have the project, I just want to make sure, because I heard Sheila say stormwater going to the, to the retention pond, but, and also to the wetland area, what wetland area? I just want to be able to be part of that and make sure this is working properly so we don't get flooded, because I'm right next door to them.
Mm-hmm.
So, and if there's any way we can work things out with the exit being out of mine, we'll talk to the workshop.
Thank you. Well, I think Steve and Robert could check on that tomorrow when you're meeting, too. According to the paperwork, the sanitary sewers have been approved along with the storm sewer, so I think they did their work with the water, the common water. Is that correct, gentlemen? So, is that correct?
Yeah, we've been working with staff on that.
Okay. And your sanitary sewers are with who? MCD, good, thank you. Any more public comment?
Yes, sir.
Public comment, please identify yourself.
Jerry Geza, 7507 Mississippi Street. I've been mowing the sign of the road for maybe 20-some years, all right? When Hobart developed that, it was Ciclich, three guys developed the property behind the house that I bought now, they put in a stoplight by the bike path, all this stuff is there, it's less than a quarter mile from 79th. Next to Nick's house, he has an approach, I told Matt last time, right at the end of his property, that trucks can come out of instead of by our house, okay? So I just hope you guys can get this worked out, all right? The approach is there already, curb cut and everything, all right? It's sunken down because they probably had a problem with the sewer when they put the sewers in, the storm sewers, because it's sunk down. But Nick knows me because he sees me out mowing at his property, and it's right in line with, north of your property, right by that telephone pole and the stoplight, or streetlight. I'm all for this also, okay, because they do good work, I mow down there where, where they have their silos on 101st and Mississippi, I, I mow all over the town, and they do excellent work, all right? So I hope you guys can figure out in your workshops, before you come to this meeting, and discuss everything, okay? Because that's what you guys are supposed to do, is talk. Communication is key, correct, Steve?
Correct, Jerry.
Thank you.
Madam President, I will make one public comment, since the Mississippi Street Corridor south of 30 to 93rd Avenue has got several cuts, and there are several, there's a full intersection at 85th that goes into my subdivision, Grand Park Cafe is there, we don't have a stoplight there, we have a stop sign, we wait for traffic all the time when I'm leaving my subdivision. There's a light at the mall at 83rd, there's no light at 85th, then you go down to PBS and where First Image Hospital Laundry is, that dead ends, on the west side, that dead ends into Mississippi. 90th Drive dead ends into Mississippi, which has truck traffic coming out of it onto Mississippi that is a four-lane with no XL/DSL lane. So again, I go back to that, Steve, you're, we had that discussion about, and I asked you when we were building 4A and 4B of Mississippi, and you said because it was four lanes, there wasn't necessarily a need for XL/DSL lane, so if these gentlemen have their drive that dead ends into Mississippi, the, the street that Jerry's on dead ends into Mississippi going the other way, is that necessarily, I mean, their offset, is that necessarily, it's working south of 30? And there's a lot more traffic between US 30 and 93rd Avenue on Mississippi, Superior ambulance is there, I see a Domino's truck going by every 10 minutes, literally, my back windows, my bedroom windows look out on the Mississippi, I see the truck traffic. And we can check with Costa, to the best of my knowledge, I haven't heard of, and I'd see it out my windows, I haven't seen many accidents on Mississippi South, so I don't know if we're going to have a conflict when these guys come in north of 30, north of the bike trail, which will be interesting.
Well, with, with Hobart and, and also us, Hobart's putting in the roundabout, or should be just done.
We are, yeah.
Up there at 61st, there's going to be a roundabout.
69th.
At 69th, there's going to be the roundabout down towards 30, eventually. Um, yeah, will that solve the problem of the need or not of a signalized intersection? Hard to tell.
Yeah.
Well, I think that would be answered with the traffic study. They're going to go ahead and have a traffic study, and I think Steve and Robert would know best.
Well, and, and another example, Madam President, again, back to my ward and what Matt and his company has done in Amerplex at the crossroads, and Joe and I are neighbors, you look at Georgia Street, 98th Avenue dead ends into Georgia Street.
Right.
And you've got NFI out there, you've got SNS Auto Tire, Auto Parts, you've got Dawn Foods, you've got Domino's, and granted, Georgia is not as wide as Mississippi, it's a three-lane segment, but there really isn't a lot of conflict in those truck movements going in and out of Amerplex, Steve, you know, I mean.
No, there's not, but you don't, you don't have, in Amerplex, you know, you don't have nearly the amount of traffic that you have, you know, traveling on Mississippi, and then you're going to throw, you know, a million square foot of, of, you know, logistics in there, I mean, that's going to tremendously impact the traffic in the area.
Well, we'll have to have a, a traffic study that we'll work with, with them, that's going to tell us what is anticipated.
Well, I think from what we've heard tonight, we would just have to wait until they have their study tomorrow, they get together, they come up with what they're supposed to do, a lot of issues that Sean mentioned makes sense, so that's where I'm at right now. What does the attorney have to say?
Well, no, as, as long as they meet within the near future, if they want to pay for and set up a special meeting, they can go ahead and do that, otherwise, we'll just wait to the next regular meeting, but right now, they need to have the meeting of the minds to get things aligned, to get things on the same page, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, attorney, I agree with you, I think we should wait for the next meeting, but of course, what do the board members think?
Well, first.
Jeff Switek?
Yes, we should have a future meeting, postpone this and have a future meeting.
Very good, thank you, Jeff, Brian?
Uh, just a point of record, the public hearing is still open, we have to see if there's any other public comment, and then formally close the meeting.
Okay.
If we wanted to move forward a little bit faster, we have had in the past a, a meeting before our first of the month workshop to finalize a certain project, so we could do that, we could have it on the first meeting, close that meeting out, get this job done, and then move on to the next month's business at the workshop.
Well, that would be up to the board.
Well, let's, I agree with Brian, let's, let's close the public hearing or see who else has comments.
Okay, sorry.
Yep.
Is there any other public speaker? Any more public speaker? Anybody want to speak publicly? Okay, public is closed, public speaking.
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we postpone P3 PS1-0525 for two weeks to be set for a special planning commission meeting on June 3rd, which is our normal workshop day, but will have a dual, a dual purpose. Do you have petitions for June 3rd, Sheila?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect. I'll second that.
Okay, motion on the floor by Mr. Pettit to postpone for two weeks until June 3rd, item P3 PS1-0525, and the second was made by Chris Mellon. Everybody in approval?
Uh, for discussion, Madam President, Joe, since she closed the public hearing, this will just be at Crowe Holdings and Planning Commission level, correct?
This is, yeah, this is just going to be a great meeting.
This is, all right, so everyone in the audience knows that this is, yeah.
Okay, so we can continue and wait until June 3rd for the next meeting, which is two weeks, is that fine with you gentlemen? Okay?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other business, board members?
No, we have to take the vote, Madam Chairman.
Oh, take the vote, I thought we had the vote.
No.
Okay, let me take the vote on that for the item P3 PS1-0525, TPL Silos LLC, petitioner and owner, to be postponed in two weeks as of June 3rd will be the next meeting. Mr. Secretary, please take the roll call vote.
Mr. Switek?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
I myself am a yes. Vice President Derring?
Yes.
And Madam Chairman?
Yes.
That's five yeses.
Okay, we have five yeses, so that's been approved to have the meeting on June 3rd. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, board members. Okay, is there any other business with the board? None?
Motion to adjourn.
You sure? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn by Sean Pettit, a second by Brian Geza. Thank you all for attending, see you June 3rd.
Thanks, guys.